We're live.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Trotlet Madison City School Board Work Session, June 4th, 2020, to order via Google Meets, stream live through YouTube. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, the meeting has been called to order.
Now, now, wait a minute. Now, wait a minute. You gonna, you gonna stop leaving me out.
I'm sorry, Mr. Scares.
Ms. Allen? Mr. Scares, I didn't see you until seconds ago. Mr. Scares?
It's me. Yes.
Now, the meeting has been called to order. Vice President Bozeman, will you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Then everybody should be on mute. Thank you.
Gotcha. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, Treasurers' Report.
We need to adopt the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. I'm sorry. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Was it Mr. Scares?
I second.
Mr. Andrews and Mr. Scares.
I have some background noise.
Someone's TV.
Someone's television. If you could, please turn it off. Okay, we now have a motion and a second. Are there any changes, additions, or addendums to the agenda?
There is just a small change on the personnel agenda. There were some additional names added for information. There are three additional names we needed to add for the information for the review of the board and vote on the 18th. Additional limited contracts, just some folks that we, we just overlooked the first, first submission.
So are you saying in the approval of the personnel agenda for 6/4 or 6/18?
6/18, 6/18. Just for information, yes, just for information.
Information only, okay.
Additional names for information.
Okay. Are they bolded or they just came up?
They, they just came up. They're on the, on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, the agenda has been adopted. Now on to the Treasurers' Report.
Okay, I have three, three items that I want to present to you today. The first one is the approval of meeting minutes from May 7th, 2020, May 14th, 2020, and May 21st, 2020. And again, that's for information only, and that is under 2A. 2B is the, an approval of PNC Bank Treasury Management Services through December 31st, 2023. Presently, PNC is our, our operational bank, and I wanted to have the board to approve that in two weeks for us to extend that through 2023. And then the third item, 2C, is the closure of the Morgan Stanley account. When Redtree, when you approved Redtrees for us to use Redtree, and that report was the closure of the Morgan Stanley, but I wanted to take it a step further to make sure that the board, our Board of Education approved the closure of accounts because all, all closures and openings of accounts have to be approved by the board. So I was just taking that one step further to make sure that this Morgan Stanley was officially closed. And so I wanted to bring it to the board for information today and two weeks from now for you to approve the closure of that account. And that was all I had this evening.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Allen. Any questions? Being none, next item up, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I have three items on the agenda this evening. One of which is for action. Item A is the approval of nursing services contract between Public Health Day Montgomery County and Mother Brunner. This is the external contract for Mother Brunner for their nursing services. Item B is a personnel agenda that I am asking for approval tonight of this, I mean, excuse me, this evening. This agenda includes the retirement, disability retirement of a, of a staff member. A1. A2 is the recommendation for approval for the following extended contracts for the 1920 school year. These are the guidance counselors. In the past, we usually give the guidance counselors 10 days, the high school guidance and middle school guidance counselors, 10 days of extended time to support the closing and opening of the school, school this year. This, this includes things like scheduling, creating the master schedule, transcripts, files, just those guidance department things that need to be closed out at the end of the school year. A3 is the approval of a teacher mentor for Maya, Maya Hague, excuse me. And then B1 is requesting approval for summer custodians. We would like our summer custodians to start on Monday, this group of summer custodians. And the majority of these folks, not the majority, all of these folks are staff members that, that work in different departments, and we'd like to get them going Monday. This position just closed last week, and we'd like to get these folks approved so we can get them in to start supporting cleaning the buildings. So I'm asking for action on this, this agenda this evening.
I need a motion on Superintendent Item B as presented.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I do have one question.
Yes, Ms. Jeter.
Do you think 10 days will suffice, given, you know, what the, what the district needs might be, considering the year we've had?
I, I would say initially, we had that conversation with, with the principals. I, I would say initially, yes, 10 days for high school and middle school and five days for the elementary counselors. If we see an additional need, I would bring that back to the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms., I'm sorry. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Did we call Ms. Freeman? I didn't hear Ms. Freeman. Did we call her? Okay, yes, motion passes. Next item?
Item 3C is for information this evening. This is a personnel agenda that is up for review and information for the board and approval, requesting approval on the 18th. A1 is the recommendation of the following certified resignations. A2 is a recommendation for the following certified supplemental non-renewals. Every year, the non-renewal of supplemental coaching positions comes up. We put them on for non-renewal as it is a one-year contract. A3 is a recommendation for approval of the following certified one-year limited contracts. These are all of the individuals in the district that are on limited contracts. Their contracts need to be renewed the next year through, up to, at this point, with a new, the new CBA, through four years. After four years, then they move to the continuing, continuing status, and that is a long list of individuals. B1 is the recommendation for the following classified resignations. B2 is the recommendation for the following unpaid leave of absence. And just a quick summary on this individual. This individual is a, an employee at Madison Park that has requested to complete his student teaching at, at Madison Park or within the district. And he didn't, he requested if he could complete his, his student teaching. And we can't pay him in his position while he's doing his student teaching. So we are, he's going to take an unpaid leave of absence and then return to us in the fall as a full-time employee once he completes his student teaching. So that's, that's kind of a, a positive thing in your grow-your-own sense because he wants to do his student teaching in the district as well. B3 is the recommendation of a classified termination. B4 is the recommendation for the following classified non-renewals. These are coaches as well, classified non-renewals for coaches. And B5 is a recommendation for the following classified employment, and this is the financial analyst position in the Treasurers' Department. And all of these are for information this evening.
Okay. Any questions? Given none, we'll move on to Item 4, Discussion Items and Updates, Summer School.
Summer School, Mrs. Minor is in the meeting. Mrs. Minor, you mind giving us an update on Summer School?
Thank you, Superintendent Howard, and good evening, everyone. Today, we, this was our Week 1 of our virtual summer academy for grades K through 5 and then high school credit recovery. So we're excited because we've gotten off to a pretty good start. I'll give you detailed feedback about different categories of things that we're watching since this is our first time doing the virtual summer school. We're really monitoring and making adjustments along the way. We have approximately 107 students that are actively, they have their devices, they're logging in and engaged with the teachers going through the lessons for grades K through 5. We have approximately 90 in the credit recovery program at the high school at this time. We do have several families, probably about 50, that had not come to central office to pick up their learning kits. And so we're gonna, we're grateful to Mrs. Love Allen, who's allowing the social workers to help us service those families who, for some reason, weren't able to pick them up. So they'll be calling and touching base and possibly making deliveries so those students can also participate. One thing we're doing this year to make sure we are monitoring the service level and the quality of instruction is we're putting together a parent focus group, and we're asking for feedback along the way. We'll have another formal meeting next week, but some of the initial comments from some of our families are they think, they're thankful, especially those kindergarten and first grade parents, that their kids have their devices, and they're actually doing pretty well accessing and doing it. I know when we had to close in March, we were thinking they were a little bit too young, but they're really doing quite well. We're able to, the curriculum team, as well as our summer school principal, we're able to plug into the classrooms and watch the children as they're learning and see how they're acclimating to the lesson and responding to the instruction. So they thanked the district. They wanted us to thank the district for the devices and the hotspots. Our tech team worked really, really hard to get the hotspots in and, and allow us to deliver them to families. So they're grateful for that. They love, we, we give out STEM kits called Kiwi Crates, which is hands-on activities. They're really excited about that, as well as looking forward to our Virtual Friday field trips. So some details, since this is our first time with virtual, there were some bumps along the road initially. So when we planned the open house last Friday, not all of the families could get on or had access. So our tech team and our summarized staff spent the weekend following up with those families who had difficulty logging in. Our help desk calls are mostly about parents calling, how do we log in? And then, once they understand how it operates, the Google Classroom, they're, they're, they're fine. Our help desk has taken about 50 to 75 calls this week. At the high school level, not as many, because those students aren't using a new platform. It's something that we have been using for several years. So those calls are mostly password resets. But on the younger side, those are for mainly, they've been, they, that's been mainly things that are technology, accessing the technology. So some accountability systems we put in place is I express that we have classroom observations that are taking place where we're monitoring the enrichment program as well as the instruction. STEM lessons are going really, really well, so we're pleased with that. Our music technology will kick off next week, so I don't have a report on that. And our movement, they had technical difficulties that we will be addressing into next week. Today, the principal and some of the lead teachers traveled around to the homes and gave perfect attendance awards, coding kits, Kiwi crates, games, things to just really, those students that had logged in every day on time and completed all their lessons got some free prizes today. So that was a nice surprise. And, and that's, that's pretty much it for our summer school, and we'll have another report next. We're really looking forward to hearing detailed information from our parents, though, because we, we need to depend on them to make sure everything's going well on, at the home, home side.
Any questions, Moore?
The only thing I wanted to know is, in the focus group, how many parents are you working with in that group?
Right now, they have 10 that have volunteered that said that they definitely would be on the focus group. But what we're going to do is send a survey out next week with preliminary questions so we can get their initial responses. And at the bottom of the survey, there'll be another opportunity, would you like to be on the district focus group for virtual learning? And so that, we know that number will go up. These 10 families are ones that, when we met, met them giving out the kits, we just asked them, you know, in conversation, if, if they wouldn't, wouldn't mind giving us feedback along the way, and they agreed. So we have their names and numbers.
Wonderful. What's in the, I'm sorry, Mr. Scares, do you have something?
I just, just one question. So what does a day in virtual summer school look like? Are they interacting with the teacher through their computer all day? Is it just them sitting in front of the screen? What does that, what does that look like?
So the teachers have been required to have a class Google Meet when the teacher presents a lesson and interacts with the kids face-to-face. And they have about 30 to 40 minutes of reading, 30 to 40 minutes of math. Then they log in and they have their STEM lesson, and then the enrichment activities. So what we've discovered is, we have it in a block of, because they, we didn't want them on the computer all day. They have some blended learning. They do some activities on their own and submit them, and others are that face-to-face interaction. And so one thing that we've discovered is, we think we have it too close together because those kids need time to log off and then log into their next session. So those are some things that we know we need to make adjustments along the way as we're following their, their day. But literally, today, I was in a classroom where a kid was doing his movement activity with the gymnastics teacher, and in the room behind was his, his sister was on, online with her teacher, and I could kind of see both things going on. So, but it's like from 9:30 to 12:30, and it's a little bit jam-packed. So doing it over, we'd spread that out more.
Thank you.
The learning packets, what, what's in the learning packets?
In the, the learning kits that we handed out to each child was a computer, the charger, the hotspot if they need it, arts and crafts materials, and all the STEM materials that they need for the five weeks. And so those are, that's what, it's like a box, and we have them at central office, and they just come pick up their whole kit. And then those children that get on every day, finish all their lessons, get free prizes at the end of the week, and that was the delivery later on.
Okay. What does the virtual field trips look like?
This week, it's the public library, our partner, which there are partners every week. They have a link, and they go into the Google link, and then they click on and have activities. So it might be a museum visit, it might be the national parks experience, someplace that maybe we can't take them to, but it's almost like they're experiencing it. Some zoos, museums, national parks, those types of things.
And what about the STEM? What does the STEM packet that they receive, what does that look like?
Well, it's a, it's called the Kiwi Crate, and it's STEM kits. It's, it's a company that actually delivers kits to homes if parents purchase it every month. But we ordered it for, back in the spring, when we started thinking about what this might look like and what we could provide to the kids at home that's engaging. These Kiwi Crates have STEM activities in each of them, and we have a STEM teacher that guides them through building the activities. And so that, that's what they have every day.
Has there been any discussion regarding what the possibility of field trips look like since things like the zoo and parks will be opening back up on the 10th?
We've not discussed doing any live or real-life video, field trips because, as you know, things are changing every day, and we didn't think that would be opened up this summer. So we've not had those discussions about possibly scheduling something like that, but it is something we can consider.
Well, not, not so much scheduling it, but those, those partners that are offering online and virtual activities, since they're going to be opening back up, places like the library or the zoo, will they be able to continue the partnership virtually?
Oh, the library has committed to the whole five weeks, and they're our partner every year. And we've kind of scheduled, they have the, the trips or the experiences, which is a link that they just do it virtually. They've got that planned out for the five weeks. So I don't believe it'll be any conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate it, Ms. Minor.
You're welcome.
Next item, Item B, Return to Work Protocols.
Yes, thank you. I, I shared with the board earlier, early this week, the responsible return to work protocols that the State of Ohio Department of Health and Montgomery County Department of Health have, have come up with. We are pretty much to a point where we are adhering to these guidelines as we are starting to bring employees back through the month of June. We are still having employees work remotely when at all possible, but there are several things that have to take place where in-person work is necessary. At this point, all of the custodial staff are back full go Monday through Friday as we start to prepare to clean our buildings. So with those understandings, we have put the guidance out to all staff working and to, to the, the folks that are coming into the buildings with regards to the five points for responsible work protocols, and we're adhering to those. Requiring face coverings, we are asking everyone in central office, everyone that is working in, in common areas to wear a face mask or cloth mask, per se, conduct daily health assessments, self-evaluation initially, and working to acquire digital thermometers to be able to evaluate employees as they are coming in. At this point, we are currently with the self-assessment portion where if you are exhibiting any symptoms, if you have a fever or if you're just not overall feeling well, to report that information to your supervisor. And if that is the case, then you will not report to work. Maintain good hygiene, encouraging hand washing and social distancing. If you come into the central office, we are practicing social distancing to a, to an almost expert level. To this point, we were keeping our distance. We've put some, some tape in specific areas where folks are, are, are coming in. We've also put some makeshift sneeze guards up at the, at the front desk, and we're also putting, going to put them up in the ELC and the high school for registration until the prefabricated ones that we ordered come in. So we have some makeshift ones at this point, but we are going to be attaching sneeze guards to all of those entry areas with regards to the social distancing aspect and that sanitizing, I mean, that hygiene aspect. Clean and sanitize the workplace. At the end of the day, the custodians will be working to use the aerosol-based sanitizer to sanitize those common areas and limit the capacity to social distancing, to meet social distancing guidelines. And I spoke to that a little bit ago. So those are the five return to work protocols that we have been very diligent with putting out to the, to the staff, also folks that are coming in. And there are also three points that if COVID-19, if there's a COVID-19 infection at the workplace, then we, there are three points that you need to follow immediately to report to customer or identify employee to the health district, public health district, work with the local health district to, excuse me, to identify those, those potentially exposed individuals and enact the contact tracing and shut down the shop floor for deep sanitation if possible. And those are the three points that we will follow in the event that there is an employee, a individual that comes in that is infected with COVID-19. Currently, there are no confirmed cases in the district. So following those five return to work protocols and those three points in the event of, we, we've also put together a "Your health is our number-one priority" poster to let the public know that are coming into our buildings. These are the things that we are doing. These are the actions that we are taking to ensure health and safety within the district. And that is a personalized poster through the United States Department, United States Chamber of Commerce, Department Chamber of Commerce. So they, they have this app where you can go in and, and detail things relative to your district. So it includes our number and our information. Then, then we also put together, also put together an FAQ for, for employees returning to work if they have some questions just about, what are we doing to ensure that, that their safety is a, is a priority? So with these bits of information, those five protocols, we feel that we are getting off to a good start with regards to bringing folks back in that, that have to do the work that is required. On Monday and Tuesday, just about everybody was in. So, you know, folks understand that when they come in, they are expected to follow these five guidelines and get the work done because we are still moving forward with, with, with the school, the business of school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. Any questions? Next item, Item C, New Superintendent Transition.
I will, I, I will kind of defer to Dr. Cosby here in a second, but I, I will let you know she and I have been working diligently over the next, last couple of weeks to prepare for this transition. And one thing that I, that I spoke to before, and I reiterate again, the benefit that we have right now at this point is the fact that every superintendent in the state and across the nation, really, well, not everywhere, but in general, are working on the same thing. So we, we're in a situation where we're transitioning with the new superintendent, but she doesn't have to come in and, and totally adapt to what we're trying to figure out or what we're trying to do to get ready for next year. Everybody's working on the same thing. Everybody's working on the same thing and, and uh she and I have worked diligently over the last couple of weeks. And we sat in on the Montgomery County superintendent's call today as a team to get more information with regards to that. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cosby to just kind of allude to how our transition has been going.
Yes, I, I think we've been doing a great job. We've been in contact. Um, I've been in meetings. I've been um meeting with the, some of the different departments. I've also met with some of the um principals and their depart, their um staff. So I've had an opportunity to meet with people. I was in today and I can confirm that uh, everybody was keeping six feet distance and I had to have my mask on and I didn't mind, I was prepared. But um they are doing the things that um we're saying that we're doing. And like Marlin said, the nice thing about what's going on is that we do have um other superintendents who are trying to make these decisions about what's the way, the best way to come back, what's the safest way for our students and what will be mandated and what can we control ourselves. So um we're working together really well. I look forward to keep Amal probably more involved with me than he wants to be. But I think that's the transition and he's in agreement with that. So, so far, so good. I'm excited to be here.
Wonderful. We're excited to have you. Uh, your first day is June 8th, right?
It's Monday, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Have you had an opportunity to move into your office and to get situated?
I have um brought in boxes, always having good intentions to unpack, but I haven't quite got there yet. So I figure I still have a lot of work to do on Monday, but I'm looking forward to it, yeah. So I have um met with my um administrative assistant. She's wonderful. I'm really looking forward to this.
Yeah, she's awesome. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, board? Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Um, next up, item D, fall registration.
Ms. Love Allen is here and she can speak to um registration and how it's been going uh from the onset of, of Monday.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Um, so just a quick update regarding our registration process. Um, so at this point, our final forms registration site is live. Uh, we've already had multiple parents, both of current students and new applicants to complete their child's forms on the final form site. Um, for those that, for our new applying parents or for our potentially new students, um, they are pretty much going directly to our website to access uh those forms um and to access the final forms website. Um, our current, the parents of our current students, uh, if they provided us with an email address last year that was in Dazzle, uh, they received a confirmation email from final forms to confirm their account so that they could go in and add, you know, change their password and then complete their child's forms um on the final form site. Some of the parents, and you know, as we've gone along, we've found that some of the parents uh did not supply the email addresses last year. So they're now calling in and they're like, okay, how do I do this? And so all, all it takes is for them to just provide us with their email address that they want to receive that information to. And then we push out an email to them. They then can go right into the site, complete their child's forms, uh, sign and submit. Uh, so thus far, it's been working uh fairly smoothly. Of course, this is a new uh program, so we're troubleshooting as we go along. Uh, but by and large, in speaking with the secretaries and clerical supports, uh, they are learning and excited about learning this program um and discovering how to fix things like when, when a parent calls in and how to troubleshoot, they, they are figuring it out. So that's actually working quite well. Um, we are attempting to add a few more features to our homepage on the website just to make it a bit easier for the parents to access the, the forms. You know, because right now, the way it's set up, the parent would have to click where it says parent. Then the drop-down menu comes down, it says registration and open enrollment, and then it goes into the site. And we're trying to create a pop-up that may come up on the home screen. So as soon as you log into Trotwood's website, about two seconds later, you get this pop-up and then they can go directly, if they click the pop-up, directly into the registration page. So we're currently working on that. And then we're also gonna look at putting a larger um larger wording in the banner of the website so that then, you know, for whatever reason, let's say they just bypassed the pop-up. Then they can still go in the banner and click the link to the, to take them directly to the registration page. So we're working on those features right now with um, like Tiara, Scott and I are working with our website folks to get that up and running. Um, also at this time at, at both buildings, the early learning center and the high school, we have um workstation set up for our parents to come in and complete those forms. So I don't know if I alluded to this once before, but we understand that some parents may not have the electronic or um capabilities to do this at home. So we've provided an opportunity for them to come in and just log on. Our secretaries and clerical support are at the ready to walk them through how to complete those forms and upload uh documents as needed. So right now, the registration process is flowing pretty smoothly. Um, in terms of our open enrollment process, those applications are also slowly coming in and kind of at a steady pace at this point. I foresee it probably picking up as we continue our marketing and radio spots. Um, I did choose to extend the deadline for open enrollment to June 30th in light of our, you know, statewide shutdown. And since central office was closed at one point, we wanted to allow parents the opportunity now to come in to pick up applications. So we have a, a station, an open enrollment application station, for lack of a better term, set up in the entryway of central office. So they can come right in, grab an application, complete it and put it in our Dropbox. Or they can download the application from our website because it's there as well. Um, the applications that have been coming in, myself and Mrs. Jordan Isaac have been reviewing them uh for completion and making sure that all the fields are totally complete. If we have some questions, we do contact the parents uh to get those answers. And then we're moving those applications to the building principals for them to make the decision on acceptance, denial or waitlist. And then they will bring them back here so that they can get the superintendent's signature and be moved on to our EMIS clerk. Um, so that, that system is working um pretty well, I have to say. It's, it's really been no glitches at this point. And parents are, you know, feeling like they know where to come to apply for open enrollment. So that, that pretty much sums up um the registration update.
How many um regis, new students do we have registered that have come in?
Um, right now, now I can't differentiate in final forms if they are new or not, but I can tell you that right now we've completed 94 students within the um program at this point. And then I know that I personally have moved um 20 applications for open enrollment into the buildings. And that's just as of today. I probably need to check the box again today because, like I said, they keep steadily coming in. So I'm trying to make sure I consistently check the box, but right now we have close to a hundred applicants.
Great.
And can I, can I add also that um we, as a part of the, the marketing campaign, just an initial step, we are um preparing to send um professional mailers from, from Catapult, working with Catapult, to those identified families that attend charter schools. Um, I think how many families was it? Do you remember exactly? Was it three, over 300? Janil?
Yes, and I know I spoke to her and I asked her definitely to target the charter schools in and around Trotwood. Um, but then, yeah, I think that number did bring us up to close to 300.
Okay, so, so with that, that, that was just our initial quick attempt. Uh, working with Dr. Cosby over the next couple of weeks, we, we will try to formulate, formulate something a little um, a little more strategic with that. But I know a board member scarce had some questions and some uh insight on what we were doing with, with that. So immediately after that meeting, we, we, we kind of flipped the switch and we, we dedicated some resources to reaching out to those individual families. And we'll be following up, following up with some personal phone calls as well. But I did want to add that, that we did uh start initially to, to try to reach out to those uh, those families of those kids attending those charter schools. Thank you so much. Yeah, well, we still got more work to do with it. We still got more work to do with it.
Yeah.
That were open enrolled with us last year, do they have to reregister and do they know that?
Yes, ma'am, too. They, they do know. Um, so actually, right before we went into the shutdown, all of the students that were open enrolled students for this current school year, if you will, they received um the application in the mail. So they received a letter that let them know um that they would need to reapply and it had the application attached. So that mailing went out right before, like literally the Friday before the Monday of our last day. So that went out pretty early on. Uh, so they do know um that they do need to reapply. And, and I have received some applications from families of um current open enrolled students reapplying.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Um, there is one thing I, just a comment. I'm really glad that um you are targeting those uh individual students from charter schools because I think, Mr. Howard, I've shared it with you. I got a call um from community person thinking that Trotwood Prep and Fitness was us. And yeah, we will, I know, I know. You probably get it all the time, right? And we have got to find a way to really differentiate ourselves because they thought they were calling the Board of Ed for that. I mean, for that school. And then we're surprised, what do you mean they're not under your umbrella? What do you mean they're not a part of what the public school system, who we really are? So maybe we can do some brainstorming on how to do that, even when people Google Trotwood City School, they come up first. So, yeah, yeah. Ms. Love Allen, you can speak on that if you'd like.
Um, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Howard was saying. I mean, we're still um trying to put forth an effort to really have a targeted marketing plan with addressing this. Um, when I got a chance to speak with Ms. Jenkins of Catapult, you know, she asked some really good questions that I think, to your point, will help us to brainstorm how to put together a targeted marketing approach to differentiate ourselves from uh Trotwood Prep and Fitness, but also, you know, um, put us in the forefront of even some of the other charter schools. You know, I've just in my own um personal life scrolling through Facebook, you know, I saw Pathway School of Discovery pop up in my feed. And I'm trying to figure out, how are you popping up in my feed when I don't even have a child that goes there? I, I, I've never worked there, so why would that be in my feed? But then it also made me think, how do I make this happen in somebody else's feed for Trotwood? Like, what do I need to do so that we are popping up when somebody, you know, is just going through their Facebook, um, their own Facebook page? So you're right. I mean, we, we just gotta keep plugging at it. And, and speaking with Rachel, she seems to be pretty astute with how to have a targeted approach in her marketing um for trying to attract students and build that, you know, that critical mass, if you will, so everybody will know that Trotwood has registration open right now. So we're, we, like he said, we're working on it. Um, I was going to tell Ms. Jenkins what I saw on my own Facebook feed, so maybe she could tell me how to make that happen for us, you know? Uh, so we can be the top Google search because everybody knows when you're top in Google, that's the, that's who they click on, you know? So how do we do that?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Ms. Love Allen.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, next item up, um, item E, fall sports.
Um, Mr. Russo is here to talk about um our, our reopening plan for uh facilities. The uh state of Ohio, uh, Ohio Department of Education, Ohio High School Athletic Association um announced about a week ago that facilities could be open for individual workouts on June 1. Uh, we put together some very strategic plans and had them uh reviewed by several health entities. And Mr. Russo can talk to those a little bit uh with the anticipation of us being able to open our facilities on June 8. Go ahead, Frank, Mr. Russo, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to um again uh present uh what we, uh, what our plan is and what I have um uh brought forth to our coaches so that they're prepared uh to meet their athletes on June 8 uh next week. So um, the plan is as follows, is um I will be meeting personally with the coaches prior to the students' arrivals to go over um all of the uh, the safety protocols uh and screenings that will take place, not only uh with our coaching staff, uh, but also with our students. Um, the uh, our guidelines will, will be in three phases, which is following the OHSAA protocol. And um, uh, that being said, every, every athlete and coach will have to perform a self-wellness check prior to arriving to the facility. Um, all athletes and coaches will have to use hand sanitizers, which we will have uh right at the doors as they are entering the door. They will be entering the Ox Gym uh to be screened. So uh our, our trainers will be there to screen the coaches. The coaches will then screen the athletes. Uh, prior to practice and conditioning, all coaches and students again will be screened. There'll be a temperature check. Um, we do have infrared temperatures uh or thermometers uh to check our athletes um to make accurate, um, accurate checks. Uh, these particular uh temperature checks will be placed on the OHSAA COVID monitoring sheets. Um, questions, there'll be uh questions which the students will have to respond to. Uh, those particular, particular questions, for example, will have to do with cough. Uh, have they been in any contact with COVID, shortness of breath, those particular types of questions are yes, no. Um, those documents then, uh, the coaches, each coach will have to take a screenshot of their particular athletes, send that to me. They will have to keep the hard copies and then hand those to me. And then we will uh keep those on file. Um, any person with 104 temperature or above uh will be sent home. Any vulnerable athlete should um not oversee or participate in the workouts. I have talked to Mr. Howard and, and Mr. McCray about that. Again, given we have uh a couple of coaches that are older coaches, um, but again, they, they have to determine to themselves whether or not um they would like to participate. So uh we did have that conversation. Uh, gatherings will not consist of any more than 10 athletes at a time inside or outside during the first phase to include all players and coaches. Uh, workouts will, uh, will be conducted in pods. Now, what a pod is, is uh, it will consist of one coach and a maximum of nine athletes. Uh, so that's where you'll have your maximum of 10. Now, um, as it pertains to outside, um, outside, uh, there's a little bit more flexibility. And what um I have come up with and I've talked to the football coaches about is that we will, we will divide our football field. So if you were to walk down to our football field while they're working out, it would be divided into what we are calling quads. So that quad would be, if you could visualize from the 45 yard line or take, take the field, uh, divided into four. So from one hash mark over to the track and from the 45 yard line down to the end zone, to the end of the turf would be one quad. And so we would have four quads and in those areas would be uh 10 individuals, pods. Okay, um, those individuals then uh will move from one, uh, after one session to another coach. Um, so all, all nine athletes will then move from one coach to another. The coaches that are going to exercise, whether we're going to utilize stations, well, it's mandatory that they will have to wear a mask. Those that don't and will be with their pod the whole time will have an option as to whether or not they can, that they need to wear a mask. Um, uh, coaches, um, uh, at the end of practice will have to again, again, file their um, their monitoring forms and then uh they, they will then have to send those, put those in my mailbox where then I will file them in the athletic office. Now, uh, there will be a minimum social distancing in phase one of two, uh, phase one and two of a main, uh, minimum of six feet. Locker rooms are closed, both outside and inside. Uh, coaches are to make the athletes aware prior to coming that um there will be no locker rooms available. However, we will have the restrooms available in the, in the stadium area as well as inside the school if they're utilizing the gym. So restrooms will be available. Um, uh, student fountains have been taped off. Um, it is highly recommended by OHSAA uh not to allow students during phase one and phase two to utilize um school water. So they are, it is recommended or mandatory, I should say, that uh students bring their own bottles of water with their own bottles of water with their names labeled on it. So there will be no hydration stations out uh, in the stadium when the players are out there. Um, face covers, like I said, are recommended to wear. However, that's up, up to the uh, the coach. Uh, athletes are not to wear um, face mask while they're engaging in exercise. Um, we are asking the coaches, and I put an email out, that the students are to sign up on final forms. That way we will have a roster. I have already talked to uh, Ms. Brown. Um, and then once we have those particular rosters, then she will go through the physicals. Students um, normally have to have a physical on file beginning August 1. And in this particular case, given our circumstance, we are uh, exercising a mandatory um, uh, that it'd be mandatory for the students to have a current uh, physical on file to participate in skills training. Um, there is uh, I have talked to the um, uh, public health in Montgomery County in Dayton, uh, Paul Scaglione, uh, who uh, had contacted Jennifer Wensel and uh, alerted her that I would be sending our protocol to her. And so I've already done that. I talked to Mr. Scaglione um, last Friday. And um, his comments to me were that they were not looking at OHSAA's guidelines, that they were looking at uh, the Ohio Department of Health. And um, I do have that and they're mandatory, you know, really what they are locked in on is their, the no touch, which is part of our protocol, no huddles, no high fives, uh, no gatherings before or after practice and also social distancing. That's really what they are looking for, uh, he had explained to me. So that is in, in our guidelines uh, for the parents and the stu- students uh, to review. As far as our uh, facilities go, all hard surfaces, chairs, furniture, weight room, equipment, bathrooms, uh, training tables, athletic equipment. Um, our maintenance department is coming in six o'clock in the morning and so they are cleaning prior to the athletes coming in. Our first group uh, in the morning will be football and they will be coming in uh, at 10 o'clock uh, through 12:30 uh, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday and Fridays. So they will clean at that time. We have uh, wipes and sprays uh, in the weight room area um, and also in the gym so that they can wipe down those particular areas after they finish practicing. Um, coaches are to clean and sanitize their balls uh, and equipment prior to each session. So that's come incumbent upon uh, the coaches to make sure that they take care of that. And again, we have those particular sanitation types of things. And we do have what we call, um, we purchased uh, green uh, so that uh, it's not toxic. They don't have to use gloves. Um, and that again, uh, those particular things are as kids are gonna be touching balls, those types of things, um, that we can do that safely. Uh, weight room will have ea- after each time a student uses uh, a bar or any type of, of um, type of, of weight room equipment, they are to wipe it down. Um, and then after we get done, there will be um, more of a sanitation um, type of exercise that uh, Coach Mutcho will go through and spray everything down, let everything dry uh, before the next group comes in. So that's five to 10 minutes uh, between each session. Um, hand sanitizers will be available um, in the uh, weight room as well as, as they enter uh, the aux gyms. Uh, alumni are not permitted to participate in the skills training or use the school facilities uh, during this time. Uh, parents, uh, we ask the parents to stay in their cars. Um, again, because uh, we're trying to exercise just 10 people per pod and only again, a limited amount of people in the gym. Now I do, again, if you would happen to walk into the gym, the first floor and second floor, you know, are two separate areas is, is the home side and the visiting side. So actually, we could have 30 people in there. So if you were to actually walk in and observe that, you could see that. Now in our aux gym, our aux gym is limited to 10 and our weight room is limited to 10. Again, that's through phase one and two. Um, I also wanna um, let you know during phase two, uh, outside, they can have a gathering of up to 50. Um, now during that time, again, they still have to exercise a six, minimum six feet um, apart. Uh, I did uh, uh, when I met with Mr. Howard, uh, I then met with uh, uh, Scott. Um, and uh, we ended up purchasing uh, again, the infrared thermometers and hand sanitizer and also um, sanitizer for our hard surfaces. So we have all of those things in place. We also have uh, copies for all of our coaches, the OHSAA COVID-19 monitoring sheets. Um, finally, phase three is basically exercising what we're doing phase one and two. Um, the only differences are that inside, again, they can begin to uh, have up to 50 indoors. Now, um, and the other thing is, is um, they would like to maintain social distance, but it can go from six feet to three feet. So anywhere between three and six feet. Um, we have pushed out this information. If you would like to look on our website, if you go to um, our website and go to the athletic page, it's right on the top. You can click on it for our parents, our athletes and our community um, to see our protocol. Um, again, um, I've had a couple of schools ask us uh, if we would share what we are doing on our end. So I think it's um, very thorough. Uh, Mr. Scaglione, um, actually had said he thought that there was a lot of work that went into it.
Mm-hmm.
I kind of echo with, with Mr. Russo. There, there was quite a bit of work that, that we put into it. And uh, we, we worked diligently over the um, over the weekend of the, of the, we tried to get that, get that out, get that together. Uh, but we thought it was best that we kind of waited till to get everything, everything passed through. Now, one unfortunate thing is that they have not um, allowed or permitted guidance or banned. Is that correct Frank?
Yes, at this point banned, um, the, the, what, what I had received um, was that it banned could not start.
Can you mute please? Can we all mute?
I'm sorry.
Is there, no, no. You can talk, Mr. Russo, but there is noise coming from the background. Okay, go right ahead.
Yes, I had, I had received um, some information stating that, that at this time, that, that banned um, should not meet. And again, I, again, when you start to put the pods together, you, you know, and um, that, you know, from that particular standpoint, I could understand that they would only want nine or 10 people uh, together. So uh, I would believe, I think that, you know, those, those would be addressed here in the next couple of weeks. So I did, I did uh, uh, make sure that um, that everyone that was involved uh, with the contacted and um, that they could not work inside or outside at this point.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Russo?
Um, I do. Uh, um, Mr. Russo, it sounds like a, a really great plan. Um, I did have a, a one question. Um, I heard you say that um, uh, you're, you're, you are encouraging parents to, to uh, stay in their cars while the uh, uh, young people are at their uh, venues. But indoors, uh, there might be, are you saying there might be some seating available, like upstairs and downstairs? Kind of separate them? And so, um, is it, are, are those seat, are those seats kind of labeled for them? Or, or how's that, how's that gonna look?
Now, now, at this point, um, those, what, what I was uh, trying to articulate was um, those particular areas upstairs would be uh, accessible to the coaches. Let's say they have a large number, then they can divide those pods up not only on the main floor, but we do have an area out uh, on the, up on the second floor that our coaches actually. Uh, I'll give you a case in point. Volleyball, let's say is just finishing up down in the gym. And um, our boys basketball team, I've talked to Coach Rocky and explained to him, hey, if, if the girls aren't finished yet and, you know, they're, that, you know, they're, they're going 10, 15 minutes overtime, you guys can go upstairs. Uh, you're allowed to go up there and let's say start to stretch and, and, and warm up uh, before you get out on the main gym. Um, at this time, uh, if parents, you know, we would have to go through the screening process with the parents uh, if they were to enter the building. And so to take their temperatures and those types of things. At this point, that would take up more time from our coaching staff. Um, you, you know, so we, we do encourage at this point that really the parents just drop the students off and um, you know, uh, that they pick their students up, wait in the parking lot if they'd like to, go home. Um, but uh, that's what we're encouraging them at this point.
Got it. Thank, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions for Mr. Russo or comments? Thank you, Mr. Russo. We appreciate the information. It was a lot of information. It was a good update. I know that we all received an email, right, Mr. Howard? Um, about all the phases, which came out May 26?
May 26, yes it did.
All right. But I, I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same uh, page along the lines of when we would actually start that conditioning and how it's communicated. So thank you so much.
Sure. And as we all know, um, this is fluid and things can change from one week to the next. So
Oh, absolutely.
And I will, I will keep our administrators all up to date. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, I am going to take the liberty on item F, um, to defer it under section eight um, based on some questions regarding compensation of public employees. So we're gonna move to the treasurer's comment.
I attached the treasurer's update for June 4th um, on board docs. And there were several topics. Uh, one was just FY, FY21 budgets, where we, we are working on those. Um, the delayed reappraisal from the county that was denied. Um, so they sent out a press release indicating that. I just wanted to update the board on the amount of money, the allocations for it's called elementary and secondary school emergency relief. Uh, $1,788,098 that was loaded onto the system. And obviously, we have to work as a district to indicate um, what we're gonna be spending that money on. And there are certain items that you could spend that on. So discussion still needs to be had with that. I wanted to let the board know that, got some good news on the health, we, on the health renewals for health premiums. This year is 7.5% and not 26% like they were last year. So I thought that was really, really good news. We're gonna have an insurance committee meeting um, with the union and with the administration on Wednesday. And we'll go over that, but I just wanted to let the board know that. And then the last thing on that, um, we are still working through the finding for recovery through our bond, bond and also our insurance. I also have a, uh, expecting a call from the deputy state auditor to further discuss um, treasurer's li- uh, financial liabilities. So I will keep the board abreast on what's going on in, in that um, arena. The last thing I just wanted to say, I actually wrote this down, so I just wanted to read this. So I said, I hope the events of this past week will help particularly African-American males not to have a knee on their necks as they try to realize their dreams for thems- themselves and their families. And so obviously, I've been glued to CNN for the last week and I just wanted to um, say that um, in support to the movement. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Next up, superintendent comments.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry about that. Um, a couple of quick things. As you um, as you move throughout the, throughout the city, you may see um, the billboards that say congratulations to the class of 2020. Um, those um, have been um, put up throughout, throughout the community just to recognize our students uh, from 2020. And fortunately, we had um, ad space that uh, key ads allowed us to change those without any cost through August. So come August, cause that's really a short term. Usually it, it would take, it would take like six months for that to change. But through August, we, we've changed those billboards and that, that's right around the time where we can celebrate and, and acknowledge those 2020 grads. And we've gotten a lot of positive comments about those already. Come August, end of August, middle of August, though the billboards can change. And then we got, we all can kind of work collectively to what, as to what those look like, work with Catapult if we still want to continue that relationship. But uh, definitely felt that this time, especially from here through, through the end of the summer, it would be a good idea to recognize those um, those graduates. Also, I, I wanna send a, you know, just, just really acknowledge the work that Ms. Love Allen has been doing with that uh, that final forms. We're probably about three or four years too late, but I, I know for me personally, I got the um, I got the notification to, to update my um, my son and daughter's information on final forms. And it's so easy. And just the fact that we don't have to fill out that stuff every year is, 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 is very, very beneficial to uh, to folks. I mean, it just comes to you, you fill it out, you update it and then boom, it's done. So we're really excited about that. Uh, we're, we're working through all those registration aspects, but we're really excited about that. And Ms. Love Allen, Chuck Richardson and um, Ella Jordan Azics really took the lead on that. And I, I want to acknowledge, acknowledge them publicly because that's a big deal for us to start moving to that uh, to that digital platform. And finally, this is my last one. So I appreciate, I appreciate um, all of the support, all of the uh, all of the help that I've gotten. Somebody asked me a question earlier today and I said, guess what? I don't know that, that question. And now I'm at this point where I feel I'm really confident in asking somebody who does. So I'm, I'm really, really excited about working with Dr. Cosby. I think we got us a, a great superintendent, somebody that is gonna be endearing and open and ready to push, help push this district forward. So with that being said, I'm good. I'm happy. I'm glad. I appreciate all the support, but I am moving on without a shadow of a doubt. I am good. And, 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 and I'm ready to help Dr. Cosby in any way, any way we can to uh, to keep moving this district forward because there's a lot of great stuff going on. I think the way that this district responded to this pandemic was, was incredible. There are, there are districts like, I don't, I'm not gonna name those districts, but there are districts out there that have a lot more reputable uh, things than we do that are asking us how we did certain things. So, so I'm really, I'm really excited about that because I know we got some good people in place and, and I think we got a great leader to help move us forward. So I'm tired. I'm ready to, to have somebody else tell me what to do at this point. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you mean the board didn't tell you enough to do? We didn't?
No comment. No comment.
You know what? Um, since we have Dr. Cosby um, with us, would you like to say a few comments?
Um, I would like to say that everyone on our superintendent's meeting today, um, they were so pleased with Marlon, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Howard and all the wonderful things that he's done. And that has been acknowledged even as he said amongst other superintendents. And I'm really excited and partly because I feel so comfortable working with him. I think that, you know, we will work together really well to um, continue the many, many wonderful things he's already got started here. And it sounds like, and from what I've seen, the rest of our team is excellent. So I, I think that um, you're already in good hands. I am gonna just try to continue to move the things forward that we have going on. It is gonna be um, a bit of a challenge and I think we can see if our um, if, if getting sports back takes such, you know, an extensive um, methodology directives, what we're gonna do, just imagine as we try to bring back our students. So we know that we have a lot to do. We are ready to get started and um, preparing for that. But it is gonna be a massive undertaking for this summer. So just want us all to, to know and to be prepared.
Thank you. And thank you for the kind words, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Thank you both. More comments. Mr. Andrews?
Okay, um, first of all, I, I would like to uh, extend our congratulations and really uh, thank you is, is just inadequate for everything that you've done, Mr. Howard, and the way you stepped in.
It is just inadequate for everything that you've done, Mr. Howard, and the way you stepped in and just took on whatever it was and just worked with it. And I'm sure that I, as much as I appreciate it, I'm sure I cannot even just understand how much effort and time and sacrifice it required of you to take on these extra burdens. And outstanding job. And really grateful for everything that you've done and want to make sure that you, that you know that and hear that, that just outstanding. And we probably couldn't have done a whole lot of the things we did if it hadn't been for your willingness to step in and try to keep everything going for us. I did like the, in Ms. Miners' report, I really did like the idea of the focus groups. I think that's, that really helps us in terms of our transparency and engaging the community with everything that we're doing. And I think that'll only help us be stronger and better and more effective as we move forward. And I like the perfect attendance awards, too. I thought that was pretty cool. Because that takes a lot for a youngster to sit there in front of a computer and do what they're supposed to do when there's so many other distractions that they could get sidetracked with. And Mr. McCray's letter to the staff for the graduation was just, just great. It was really good. And I tell you, I say it again, it just makes me really proud and pleased to be a part of, of what we're trying to do here. And that's, that's about it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Mr. Scares?
Thank you very much. First, I want to say thank you to Ms. Allen for your comments regarding the things that have transpired over the past couple of weeks. You know, just, just really thank you. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Howard, thank you so very much for everything that you've done in your tenure as interim superintendent. I don't think anyone could have done a better job. So thank you very much. Welcome to Dr. Cosby and excited to have you start and continue the great, the great history of Troywood Madison City Schools. One thing I will add, in light of everything that is going on in our country, I think certain people are in certain positions for particular times, for particular things. One of the things that I personally want to bring up at our retreat is first off acknowledging that Troywood Madison City Schools is a predominantly African-American district. And I would like to see a conversation start about instituting some kind of African-American history from pre-K all the way through 12th grade that is substantive and rigorous to help try to combat from an educational standpoint, some of the ills in our country. And I don't think any better time to have a conversation about that than now. But it is a very difficult time to be a black man. But those of us, I feel the Lord has blessed us with opportunity and position, should use it in a way that is advantageous for every black male coming behind him. And that's all I'll say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
I want to again thank Mr. Howard for stepping in and bringing us back to the culture and climate that we had and the being the perfect person to weather all of the storms we had, you know? And you did just an excellent job with culture, climate, with resetting the stage. And I really, really do appreciate that. I'm so excited for our A-team that we have with you and Dr. Cosby coming in. So through all of that, I think we're, we're positioned in a really, really good place. And to echo part of what Ms. Allen and then Mr. Scares was saying, you know, I was thinking about that. And we have our football team. We have our young black men that were out during, you know, the tornadoes. And our coaches have taught them to be leaders. And I was wondering what their thoughts were during this time of attack on black men. And I don't know if we pull something together to have them, you know, have a voice, to have a conversation, to have a podcast among themselves and maybe Springfield, Springboro or our neighboring schools. But I think it's a conversation if they need to have that. But it's something that kind of crossed my mind. But through all of that, we love you, black men, and stay strong.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. Vice President Bozeman?
Yes. Echo, of course, everything that I've heard. Thank you for everyone who's out there watching. It's a beautiful night. You could be out there walking around, but you're here listening to us. And so we appreciate that, of course. I was really interested in the summer school academy. So I was glad to hear about the virtual academy and how that's coming together and how that can come together for us in the future when we do have a virtual academy, online academy for our students. I'm interested in the fall sports and how that's going to pull together and if those rules that we have for social distancing will work and if all of that will kind of still kind of hang together. So that is sounding good for now. So I want to continue to kind of keep my eyes on that. And as always, I echo everything that's been said that's been happening over the past few months, years, all of it. But I, and it's very sad, of course. But as with the tornado, as with COVID-19, you know, in my head, I always think of it as being transformative and also as an opportunity for us to be better. So just kind of like what Mr. Scares was saying and Ms. Jeter Freeman was saying, for sure, let's take it up a notch. You know, okay, this happened, but now what are we going to do with it? How are we going to make us a better district? How are we going to transform ourselves into something bigger, into something better, into these fantastic critical thinkers who move things ahead into movers and shakers? And so that's where we need to go. We've done it with COVID-19. We have a virtual academy now. So let's take this experience and move that forward. I love the idea about the podcast. You know, I love all of those ideas that we just kind of threw out. And I want that kind of thinking to continue to move ahead. Mr. Howard, I know you got thrown into this position. You just got baptized by fire. Sorry about it, but thank you, thank you, thank you so much for everything that you, that you did. It was, you know, fantastic. Couldn't have had a better person do it. Welcome, Dr. Cosby. Luckily for you, you didn't get so much fire. But, you know, we'll try to do what we can to put a little bit of fire under your butt, you know? We'll give you a little fire, but not as much as Mr. Howard got. But welcome, and we look so forward to working with you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Well said. I echo my counterparts. I want to just start out by saying, thank you, Mr. Howard. You rose to the occasion. You jumped in on what seamlessly seemed like a regular day as an operations director and ended up going home as the Troywood Madison City Schools superintendent. And for that, we are grateful. In working with you and as not just board president, but a member of the board, it has been a pleasure. You have really led the charge. You have made our culture even better than it was. And again, I want to say thank you for that. We are so excited for what is yet to come. And we will miss you, but not really because we still have access to you. So we are excited about that, too. Dr. Cosby, welcome. Cannot wait to get started. Mr. Howard has three more days with me, all right, in this board. Dr. Cosby, we are so excited about you being in the position. Thank you so much. Right time, right place, right people. What can we say? I also want to say that the virtual graduation piece that came out, I've never seen anything like that. It was amazing and phenomenal. And I want to give some shout outs because we had staff who worked on that. Patricia Allen, phenomenal job leading that. Our technology, Luke and Eric and Alan, who shot the various videos. Thank you so much for your hard work. Mr. Ladd, who was a part of bringing in tons of photos to bring it all together. We just want to say thank you on behalf of the board. And then there was Rhonda Trailer, who gave access to all the yearbook photos and all of those things that helped create the masterpiece that we all got to witness. I've got nothing but rave reviews about that product. And it was just, I like to have it every year. I mean, I know that, again, we're looking at how we can better serve our students and families, how we can get better. We don't always have to do the same things over and over. And it took a pandemic to show us how to do that. It took a pandemic to now have a virtual academy, like Ms. Bozeman said. And also to have our kids, they forced us to use technology for teaching and learning, which we've been tossing around for a very long time. So again, just want to say thank you. Want to say thank you to staff for just an awesome year of being resilient through all of these, these hard times. And again, we couldn't have done it without you. We are all better together, one team, one fight. Additionally, I want to just kind of comment on what Ms. Allen has said and Mr. Scares, as well as the Jeter Freeman and my entire board, as a matter of fact. We are sitting in the seats that can affect change. We are here and the time is now. And this is an opportunity to do that so that we can serve at the highest level during these uncertain times and during the state of the, of the, of the world, basically. I don't even want to say the country. It's all over the world. But right here in Troywood, we can make a huge difference. So again, I'm looking forward to the retreat on the 20th. You guys send in what you like on that agenda in reference to that. Because, Mr. Scares, that is a great, great, great idea. Thank you for opening that up to all of us to consider. Other than that, I, I want to also just commend the work of the entire executive board, our central office for knocking on doors, doing more than enough and going over and above. Again, thank you. I now need a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual per Board of Education Policy 0166 and ORC 121.22 G1 MB to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for public, for a public body or a public office per ORC 121.22 G6. Official action may be taken. So.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any questions? Being known, Ms. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Bozeman? Yes. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes. We will now enter into executive session at 6:55 PM. Just want to say thank you all for joining us. We appreciate you. We love you. And thank you.